Good evening. Thank you all for being here this evening at Coffee with the Candidates. If you don't know here, or you're new to Multiply Church, my name is Harrison. I serve as one of the pastors on staff, and this is Pastor Steve. He also serves here on staff. And so before we get started this evening, we're going to kind of remind you of the purpose of the event, and also give you a few rules to help us engage well. And so I just want to start by reminding you, the purpose that we're doing this for is in order to equip you, in order to equip you to vote and steward your vote well later this year. And so we are looking to give people a good worldview and a good opportunity to get to know the candidates and their hearts, so that you can make a wise decision in stewarding your vote this November. And so as we do all this together, Pastor Steve's going to lay down some ground rules here in a second for you all and for the candidates. But before we do that, we just want to cover this moment in prayer, and we want to say that this evening is all for the glory of God. And if nothing else happens, God's going to get the glory this evening. And so would you share a word of prayer with me? Heavenly Father, we just ask in the name of Jesus right now that you would cover each of the people here. We ask in accordance with your word that if we don't have wisdom, that we should ask you, and you will give it to us abundantly. So we ask that you would give us all wisdom this evening to be able to receive well, to understand well, to have open hearts, to engage with one another in love. And I pray that you would be glorified in every moment of this event this evening. Every moment, God, it's all for your glory and your name's sake. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen, amen.
One of the ways that we honor God is by honoring those who are in leadership. The Scripture tells us as Christians that we're to show honor to those who are civic leaders. And we are tonight so blessed to have those who are running for school board, those who are running for North Carolina House, North Carolina Senate, and for Supreme Court to be here with us, to give us information. And so though it may be tempting, you may watch things on TV, may have been attended town halls and all those sorts of things, I want you to know, tonight is about gathering information, it's not about showing your affirmation. And so what we want you to do is tonight is to withhold your response verbally or with hand clapping, and save your response and your affirmation for the polls in November. Let that be the place where you show your agreement or your disagreement. We want to honor all of those who have come to be here tonight, and we have a limited amount of time, because we want to spend a lot of time out in the lobby afterwards, being able to have some one-on-one in our coffee and desserts afterwards. And so we want to ask you just to be respectful of that tonight as our candidates are here. If you would, join me in welcoming our pastor here at Multiply Church, Dr. Douglas Withrow. Hey, so thanks again so much for being here. We believe that not only this is going to be beneficial for you, but there is going to be a multiplied effect in our community, because you guys go out and you have conversations. And so aren't you thankful for candidates that value people enough to come and to be a part of something like this? You know, you can see a website, and hopefully we do get information off of websites. We see all the yard signs out there, and so name recognition, but there's nothing like looking into somebody's eyes and hearing their heart and hearing what the issues that they are passionate about. And so we just appreciate both the attendees and the candidates for being here this evening. So would you join me in welcoming our first group for the Cabarrus County School Board as they come up? You can applaud for all of them, so come on up, candidates for Cabarrus County School As you can see, there are a few of them. It may have been easier to interview those who are not running for Cabarrus County School Board. So we've got a lot of people, and that is great, because it shows the interest in education. I wanted to remind, we told our candidates this, so we've got a countdown clock. Obviously, there's a lot up here, and then we've got our state house and senate, and then judicial after that. So we want to give everybody a fair amount of time. And so we've got a countdown clock. It's three minutes. And so they can see the countdown clock, but we are also putting the countdown clock behind them. And I told them that is called accountability, so the audience can see the countdown clock. If they get to three minutes, somebody can throw a flag, call a delay of game. And no, I'm not giving myself a countdown clock on Sunday morning, so I don't have to play by my own rules, but this is their countdown clock. Again, Cabarrus County School Board candidates, we're so thankful for just your interest in education. This matters, the next generation matters. Whoever, I believe whoever gets the next generation wins. And so this is so important. So our one question for all of our candidates, same question, they received this question ahead of time, but I'm going to ask it for everybody. So if you will give us a snapshot of who you are, why you're running, and what you believe are the top one or two issues or decisions facing Cabarrus County schools in the next several years. So a snapshot of who you are, why you're running, and what you believe are the top issue or decisions facing Cabarrus County schools in the next several years.
All right, so I will kick this thing off, and I'm just so thankful to be here. My name is Laura Blackwell. This is my reelection year, so for the last four years, I have proudly served on the Cabarrus County Board of Education. I will tell you a little bit about myself. So I have lived here since 2000. I've got three children, one is almost 18, which is hard to believe, that I have almost adult child of my own. And then the other two are 14, one is in ninth grade, and the other 14-year-old is in eighth grade. So if that doesn't make sense to you, I will explain. Two of them are my biological children, and I have a stepdaughter now, which has been very interesting. I've never had a daughter before, and so this is a new place for me. I ran in 2018 for school board, because I have a tremendous passion for our children. But I will be very honest with you, more than that, I felt like God put it on my heart to do that. And I say that to you, because I've always felt like the Lord had a path for me, and He was guiding me on that path for a certain reason. And I really want to talk to you about that tonight, because He gave me a verse that He's never given me before, and it has stuck in my head all day. And it's, "You were made for such a time as this." We have had very difficult decisions over the last four years to make, whether it be through COVID, whether it be through certain materials that might be in our school system, whether it be a trust issue amongst parents and teachers. All of those things have been very, very tough for us to deal with, and sometimes as humans, we wonder why we were put on this mission at this time in life. And like anyone else, I questioned myself in that way as well. But the Lord made it very clear to me today that He made me for such a time as this. And I'm willing to take that responsibility and take that on head-on for the next four years. What is one or two of the things that I think are going to be the biggest issues? I definitely think that as we move forward, and as Christians, we are going to have to make some serious decisions about what we are and are not willing to tolerate. We are Christians, and God put us here for a purpose and for a reason. And those reasons are going to at some point come to a stalemate. And we as Christians are going to have to decide and draw a line in the sand with what we are and are not willing to tolerate. And that now, I believe, is going to be one of the biggest issues that we have. Along with learning loss and along with trust, we have a big situation right now with a division in trust in educators, as well as parents, as well as children. And we are going to seriously have to focus on that moving forward. There we go.
Well, good evening. My name is Carolyn Carpenter, and I have been in Cabarrus County for around 48 years. I have been married for 52 years to the most wonderful man in my life. I have two children, three grandchildren. I have been on the board, I have had the honor and privilege to serve you for 15 years on the Board of Education. Prior to that, I served 12 years as a county commissioner. I feel that one of the big things that we have coming, well, that we have to do in the coming years, is we really have to work very hard to retain and keep our teachers. Not only our teachers, but we also have to have TAs, that's teacher assistants, also bus drivers, and people to work in exceptional children. And we need to do all these things, so we can teach our children and continue to teach our children. Everybody says, "Well, you've got to give them raises." Well, money alone is not going to do this. And we have to do this, so we can get our children back where they need to be. We keep hearing, "We have learning loss, learning loss." Well, if we want to get this learning loss that we lost during COVID, we're going to have to have the teachers and all the staff to do this. And so that's the second thing that we need to do. And so we need all this to do it. And we're going to have to be thinking out of the box if we want to do these things. Some of the things we have already started doing, having summer programs and mediation for these children, so we have started doing a lot of these things. But we have to continue to do this thing. A little bit more about me, I'm originally from this area, and I have been here because I wanted to do it. I remember when I crossed that line about 46 years ago, I knew that I had entered God's country. And I knew it. And I had made this my home, and you made me feel welcome, every one of you, and my children welcome. And I do it with pride. And I think that I have proven myself over and over, and I think that's why I've been on this board for 15 years. And there's so much, I think Laura hit the nail on the head when she says, "We have got to make a difference." I know I go to meetings many, many times, and we've heard parents say that they want things to change. And I'm willing to work with our board, there's seven of us, and we all have to work together to make a difference. But I think we've got to put God back into our board, and I'm willing to do that. And I want to thank y'all again for letting me be here today, and please remember me in November.
Can I stand? Okay. My name is Pam Escobar. I'm a mama bear. I have two daughters in Cabarrus County schools. I've been married for 20 years, and I'm going to take you back 14 years when I became a mom. I had natural childbirth, that was not the plan, but like I said, God has plans for us, right? So that was, I thought, one of the hardest things I would ever do, right? But it taught me that I can do hard things, that I can be strong, and that I can be there for my girls. And I have faith that if there was ever a time where, God forbid, something happened to my kids and they were pinned under a car, that my strength, that my adrenaline could lift that car, because that's what being a mom is. That's what being a mama bear is. So when you watch school board meetings, and I started doing that during the pandemic, and I am hoping and trusting that school board members are going to care about my kids the same way that I do, care about education the same way that I do. And yet, I'm watching meetings, and people are being disrespectful, using language I wouldn't want my children to use, talking about things that have nothing to do with the quality of their education. You bet that this mama bear was upset, really upset. Because I think the hardest thing isn't giving natural childbirth. I think the hardest thing is having your heart, I have two of them, walking around outside your body. And you're trying to do everything you can to protect them. Now, the job of a mama bear is to put yourself out of a job, right? The goal is for them to be independent. So I'm working on that. There are freshmen, I have a freshman, and I have a fifth grader. But when I think about what is so important right now, I've been lucky enough to talk to parents. Now that I'm running, lots of parents are sharing with me some of the same frustrations that I had. And they tell me stories where they send emails, and they don't get a response. So when an EC parent, an exceptional child parent, tells me that their kid's not getting the services that they need from their IEP, that's an issue. They should get a response. When a parent tells me that their child has been standing at a bus stop for an hour, and the bus is getting them to school late, that's a problem. They deserve a response. There's too many issues like that, that they are not getting a response to. So I need you. I am strong. I'm a mama bear, right? But I need your help. I can't do this by myself. So help me lift that car. Help me.
I'm going to stay seated, because I'm just as tall sitting down as I am. Standing up. First of all, thank you all for being here, thank you for having me, thank you for your attention tonight and your interest in what's going on in our community and local government, where I think real difference is made. My name's Brian Floyd, and I think I know a lot of you, it's really bright, so I can't see, but the ones of you I've seen, I know, and a lot of you know me. There's three things I want you to know about me if you don't know me. And that is, one, that I'm a product of this school system, this is my home, this is where I grew up, this is where I'm from. I own Beverly Hills, Concord Middle, Concord High. I played in the Bell game, I was in the Boys Club. This is my home. And many of you that are from here know what that means. I'm also a former classroom teacher in this school system, and a football coach and a track coach. And I was a teacher a year in 2014, as a matter of fact, for Concord, and was a finalist for the county. So I've got a perspective from inside the classroom, not just as a student, but as a teacher. And then right now, I'm currently a parent of a Cabarrus County school student, and I got another young child that will be in Cabarrus County schools. So I think those are three really important perspectives to have. Following my graduation from Concord High School, I went on a journey almost, if you would. I went to the Citadel, it's a military college in South Carolina, and I had a great career there. I was a distinguished military graduate in 2004, and immediately upon graduation, I was commissioned in the United States Army. And I fought in combat as an infantryman in the 82nd Airborne Division on multiple tours in Iraq, and I've had multiple combat decorations as a result of that. So I have a different perspective of leadership than not even everybody else has in the places that I've served. I think that's a really important thing, because you learn a lot of lessons that can be applied outside of that environment into other environments. When I got out of the Army, though, I really struggled to reintegrate into the world. And truth be told, I could have really easily become a statistic. As time goes on, and I've said goodbye to more people, I realize how much more real that could have been for me. I got lucky, and I happened to fall backwards into teaching. I got hired on to do it, it's kind of the thing to do, and I realized that I was where God put me on this earth to be. And it was what I loved to do, and it was the most important thing in my life. And it was really, really hard, because when you find that thing that you feel like God put you on this earth to do, you also don't have a control over what comes next in your life. And in 2014, I had another opportunity, and I was kind of led to go outside the classroom. And I've really struggled ever since I left, because I felt like that was home for me. And I was glad to be able to get out and to find other ways that I can serve, like running for school board. But I've also been on many other boards, such as Rotary, United Way, Boys and Girls Club, Arts Council, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Salvation Army, Boy Scouts, Foundation of Carolinas. I co-chaired the COVID Relief Fund that gave impact grants to nonprofits that wouldn't go out of business. And my wife and I found, funded, and direct a foundation in memory of our late daughter. So I've got a lot of budget experience, I have a lot of decision experience, and most importantly, I have experience of what's going on in the actual classroom today. And I think that's really important. So I like to bring that into our school system.
Good evening, and thank you, Multiply, for having us here for this event. I'm Melanie Freeman, and I'm running for school board. My family actually attended here at First Assembly when my children were young, so this is homecoming for me. The most important thing for you to know about me is that I am a Bible-believing Christian. I am also a professional cellist and teacher. I have taught in the schools, as well as an adjunct on the university level, so the whole spectrum. I'm married, we have five grown children, 10 grandchildren, and my two oldest sons attended Harrisburg Elementary until fifth grade, when we pulled them out to homeschool them with our other three children. I have taught the K through 12 curriculum multiple times with success, using textbooks. During the pandemic, parents became aware of the condition of their child's education, and how little control they had, and alarm bells went off everywhere. I also became aware that I wasn't through yet. God had not only blessed my family with experiences, but He wanted me to bless others with those same experiences, to whom much is given, much is required. My children may be grown, but my grandchildren will inherit a much different world from what we've known. Eighty-five percent of our children will go through our, and I stress "our," public school system. These children will become the influencers of their world. You change a world through education, and this is why our children have been targeted. Today, our children are schooled primarily via the internet, and parents have little to no control over that content. Emphasis is being placed on gender identity, feelings, and emotions, rather than learning skills like reading, writing, and arithmetic. Things that equip them to be adults who can get a job, get married, have a family, and support that family, and live independently. As a parent and a teacher, and a parent-teacher, I have been blessed with unique experiences and understand the education. A school board member is a liaison between the parents and the classroom. A school board member will make policies concerning your child's bathrooms, their locker rooms, their curriculum, and teachers. They need discernment, they need to be able to recognize CRT that's already embedded in the curriculum. They need to understand gateway programs like social-emotional learning that introduces ideologies that conflict with your family's moral values. And they need a high morality of integrity to protect our children from pornographic and highly sexualized materials in our classrooms and libraries. I believe I have this testimony in the community. But we also need commissioners and state legislators of like minds. So please pray for a righteous election and voting integrity, and encourage others to vote. One vote will make a difference. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Wow, thank you, Melanie. Who wants to follow that? Good evening, guys. Thank you, Multiply Church, for having us tonight. My name is Lane Jarvis. I've been a county resident here since 1982. I was born here. I was born right up the street. I am a product of what the school system used to be. I actually went to school with Brian Floyd right next to me. I have coached in the school system, and I actually coached with Brian as well. And I actually just left last year, so I could sacrifice my personal time to run for school board. We were asked to talk and take a few moments to list our top issues, obviously. And some of my top issues here for our school system and our kids, one is our budget. Where's our money going and how is it being used? That's a question I've asked many times, and I have still yet to get an answer. I've even asked the... Sorry. I've even asked the school board where our money's going, and what happened with Wes Cabarrus a couple of years ago, where we lost the million dollars, actually, I think it was $3 million, nobody knows. Nobody's given me an answer. That's one thing I'd like to fix. I'd like to open the budget, so everybody in our community can see where our money and our tax dollars is headed. Our second, my second thing is our mental health for our children. Our kids are facing things that we never had to while we were in school, whether it's a school shooting, furries in the classroom, litter boxes in the bathroom, or even these books that we've seen that have made the news. It's time we start helping these kids. It's time we take time out of our busy lives and busy schedules and invest in the future, the future being our children. The third thing I would like is parental rights restored. You can go to the school board, and you can speak in front of the school board, but how many of you feel like it falls on deaf ears? Do any of you get a response when you write an email? Does anybody here ever get a chance to really talk to a school board member, other than during election time? These are all things that we as a community need to work on. And I'm the one standing up, saying this is something that I'm willing to fix.
Good evening, everyone. My name is James McLean. I'm one of these candidates, this great group here, and I want to thank them all for being here, for taking the time to do this. Also, thank you, Multiply Church, not just its leadership, but its membership, because it takes you to make something like this really happen. I'm running this race, I'm a Cabarrus County resident. My wife and I have been here since 2007. My wife is from Miami, Florida. I grew up in New York City, though I was born in a little small town called Sanford, North Carolina, the brick capital of the world, perhaps you've heard of it. We've been here, and we have four children. Three of them have graduated from Cabarrus County schools. My wife and I have been married for 29 years. If the Lord lets us see February next year, it'll be 30 years, and I'm thankful for that. I'm also a pastor, and I have a vested interest in the community. I have a vested interest in our children and our children's children. There's a study that says, whatever you see happening now on a college campus, you'll pretty much see that in the society 10 years from now. And that's why I'm concerned about what's taking place in the school system. Some of these candidates have said earlier that one of the things that we have to focus on is parental involvement. That means all of us, whether you're black, you're white, you're Christian, you're non-Christian, you have to get off your blessed assurance and do something. And that's why I'm doing this. Certainly planting a church in 2020 is a task by itself, but I also felt the need to do something. And like I heard, I think Laura say earlier, who knows, perhaps you were created for such a time as this. I think one of the concerns that all of us have, and we've heard it at different forums, is that the, how do we recruit and retain quality teachers? That's the key. Now, you and I are the first teachers, the primary teachers at home. But then when we turn them over, and we've all been there, and you're the tears, and you're about to break down, and letting them go into that building for the next 12 or 13 years. How do we keep the best possible people in that classroom that have so much influence and that spend so much time with our kids? That's a primary concern. I know it's not just dollars and cents, it's not about the money, but the money does matter. And as someone said last week, we can find money if we look hard. But we also need to look at some of us, community leaders, that can create incentives. It ought to, people ought to want to come back and teach in Cabarrus County schools. That's one of the primary concerns. If we're going to move forward, I think Martin King said, "We may have come here on different ships, but right now, we're all in the same boat." If we're going to move forward, we're going to have to do it together collectively with smart solutions for today that will make change for 10 years from today. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Greg Mills, and I am a lifetime resident of Cabarrus County. My family moved here when I was in the first grade, went to Harrisburg Elementary School, Hartsell Middle School, and graduated from Central Cabarrus High School in 1991. That's where I met my wife. We've been married for 27 years now. She's probably in a back row, shaking her head at me. Oh, wait a minute. Oh, that's not good. Wow, I can't stop looking at myself on TV. It's so weird, it's really weird. I got into this race because my wife is a teacher. She's a 20-year veteran in the school system, she's an EC teacher. And I've seen not just what she's been through in the last three or four years, but what the teaching profession has gone through in the last 20 years. And the thing of it is, if we want really good education for our kids, we've got to keep our good teachers. Several people have already mentioned that we have a staffing crisis, and recruitment is a problem, but it's less of a problem if we make a good place for teachers to work. Teachers want to work in Cabarrus County, and we can keep the good ones that we have. And I was thinking, it's the main issue, but something that occurred to me just yesterday, as I was thinking about what I wanted to say to Multiply Church tonight. Like what Laura said, we've all been through a lot in the last three years. You know, we saw George Floyd, we saw riots, we had a racial reckoning that we're still trying to work our way through. We've been dealing with transgender issues, kids that are gender confused. We've been dealing with CRT, trying to figure out what that is and what it looks like in our classrooms. And now we're talking about social-emotional learning. All of these things are issues that caused a lot of anxiety for us, right? And they're important things, and sometimes when we have anxiety, what we want to do is fight. And we do need to fight, we do need to stand up for our rights. But what I want to say to you, because I assume we're in a church, and most of us are believers, is think about how we fight, right? We're Christians, our hope is not in anything on this planet, right? We know things may get a lot worse, but in the end, they're going to get a whole lot better. I mean, we need to act like that hope is inside us, right? The Bible says that we're to be salt and light. And so I don't know if you're going to vote for me, but as you consider who you're going to vote for, I want you to look at these candidates, and I want you to say, who is going to be a light? Who is going to provide hope? Who is going to take this turmoil that we've been dealing with for the last three years and turn it into peace and hope? Is there a way to do that? Who's going to make that their goal and their objective in this race? Who's going to make that their goal and their objective in this race?
Hi. I appreciate all of you giving up a Friday night to come and care about our children and our schools. It's easy for me to share my heart with you about this position because I've spent my entire career advocating for children and families. I am Catherine Bonds Moore. I am a lifelong resident of Cabarrus County. I have a lot of history and roots here. Both of my parents are actually graduates of Cabarrus County Schools. I attended Northwest. I have two children who are graduates of Robinson. I actually live in the home that my great-grandfather built out in the Poplar Tin area. My first job here was as a student bus driver. I thought that would be really cool. And it was at that age. I'm not sure about now. But I knew I wanted to work with children. So I went on to Appalachian, got my education degree and also got a master's in counselor education. And I knew I wanted to come back to Cabarrus County Schools and teach. I was one of the first six elementary guidance counselors hired here. I have seen a lot of changes. I have worked with seven different superintendents. Five of them I've served as a teacher representative on the leadership team with them. I was school improvement team for 10 years at Odell. So I feel like, you know, I know I'm qualified. And again, I've advocated for children, especially children with special needs. And after retirement, I did volunteer work with Mental Health of America. And I serve and help and advocate for parents on IEP meetings. As far as issues, well, especially where I live, it's going to be redistricting. I think that's coming up in the next several years, the growth in the county, which is great. Everybody's wanting to come to Cabarrus County Schools. So that says we're doing something right. Since I've been at Odell, we went through six redistricting times with new schools opening. So I know a little bit about that. And it's not easy. It's hard on families and communities when you have to separate and go to another school. Safety, with some of the past current events happening, I think we're all concerned about safety. In the last couple of years I taught, we had what was called the prayer row. Teachers would get there about 30 minutes before school opened and we would just sit in our cars and pray that our children were going to be safe that day and our teachers were going to be safe. Teachers are going to do everything they can to keep children safe. That's what we do. Our facilities department does a great job with putting emergency plans in every room with evacuation maps. So we all need to pray for that. We need to pray because the greatest gift we can give parents is for them to drop their children off at school or put them on the school bus and go to work or wherever they go feeling good about where their children are going. So I would appreciate your vote. Again, it's Catherine Bonds Moore. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Sam Tredaway. I have been in education, public school education, for about 40 years. The... I guess the thing I want to bring to the school board is just what I put on my sign, and that is experienced leadership. I was a principal for a long time. Before that, a teacher, an athletic director, football coach. Our two boys came through the system. And in fact, one of them is a teacher now in Cabarrus County Schools. And his wife is a teacher in Cabarrus County Schools. We have a granddaughter that's a first grader and we have a grandson who's looking forward to school. I was, you know, I was principal of the year, teacher of the year, all that kind of stuff. But one of the things that I really enjoyed the most was after I tried to retire, I was not very successful at retiring. They kept calling me back to do interim positions. And I see some familiar faces from some of those schools that I served. I've been in elementary, middle and high schools in every feeder district. In fact, I've lost count, it was over 30 schools I served in interims. And one of the things that I found in that experience is that our schools are different, but there's a core value that our schools have, no matter what part of the county you go to. We were asked to address maybe one or two large issues. And I would like to use my experience maybe to kind of piggyback on what Kat said, and that is growth. I want to use an example that's right here, in that just behind us is Hartsell School, which closed in 1989 when they built Freeze. So in '89, we replaced that school with J. and Freeze. It became the largest middle school in the state. Then we built C.C. Griffin to help reduce the overcrowding there. Shortly after that, it became the largest middle school in the state. And then we created or we redistricted and opened Hickory Ridge Middle. I use all that because one of the things that I feel like is a huge challenge, we're the eighth biggest district in the state, and how do we make a big district like that feel small? Because we want what we had less than 30 years ago at Hartsell Middle School, where everyone knew everyone and you knew you could walk in the office and get answers. That's hard when you have schools that are so large. I think that's one of the things that I'm hoping to bring to the school board, is how can we have ownership again of our schools as parents and as students? Thank you.
I am going to stand up, if that's okay, because I'm 5'8" on a good day. I'm still waiting on that growth spurt Mom keeps promising me about. This is going to be the year. It's just not come yet. Last time I stood up in front of a church and spoke, it was super easy. It was December 19th, 2021. All I had to do was repeat after the pastor, a little profession of faith, take a little swim, everybody cheered, it was all over. I just got a notification on my watch that my heart rate has been at 120 beats per minute for the last nine minutes. So this is a little more nerve-wracking. My name is Sean Turner. I grew up in Cabarrus County. I went to Northwest Middle School. Fun fact, Sam Tredaway was the principal when I was there. And he assigned me detention for writing my name on the backseat of a school bus. I graduated from Northwest Cabarrus High School. Later on in life, I went to Rowan Cabarrus Community College and got my associate's degree. And then just this past May, graduated magna cum laude at University of South Carolina with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. After high school, obviously 2001, 9/11 happened. And like Brian, I felt a service to call. I took a break from college and joined the United States Marine Corps. In 2005, I found myself in central Iraq, supporting Operation Iraqi Freedom for a year. I came home, met my wife in February that next year, and we just celebrated 14 years of marriage last Tuesday. We have two little boys. One is eight and one just turned one back in the summer. And my eight-year-old's in third grade at Pitt School Road Elementary. And my one-year-old will attend the same school when he reaches kindergarten. Why I want to run for the school board? That's a great question. Because I think I need, I'm due a mental health assessment at the end of these last nine months. This is a pivotal moment. I don't have to regurgitate anything everybody's already said, really. It's a very pivotal moment in our public education system, and this is a very crucial election. I think if I were to say what is the most important thing I think right now that would have a ripple effect, a positive ripple effect across the education system, it would be to compensate our teachers and those employees within the education system. We talk a lot about teachers not making a lot of money. Well, I'm talking about bus drivers. I'm talking about the techs that service those buses. I'm talking about the guys and girls that work in our facility maintenance, or maintenance facilities. It's a big deal. Cabarrus County used to be competitive. All right, my parents moved me here. They could have chose any county around this area. They chose Cabarrus County because it was the best. And we got to get competitive again, and it starts with making that quality of life for those employees better at home. And we do that, in my opinion, we do that by paying them a little bit more and paying them for what they're worth. All right, instead of spending $125 million on a new school, how about we show them that we care about, more about what's inside that school than the aesthetics of a building? This is way longer, this answer and these topics are way longer than three minutes. So I'd be glad to talk to you guys after this. Thank you, Multiply, for putting this on. You had me at coffee and church. Thank you.
Hey, can we express our appreciation to all of these amazing candidates? If you guys will stand, Pastor Bill, would you just step to the front here? Can we pray? We want to pray for you guys. And Pastor Bill, so I'll ask that you pray for all of our candidates and pray for education, that education gate in Cabarrus County.
Father, we thank you for each and every man, woman who is standing on this stage today, God, who has dedicated their time, their energy, their resources, their heart, their mind, God, everything that they possess. God, to give you their best, to, Lord, take upon their heart the educational system of this county and to be willing to make a difference, to make it better. So I pray for each one of them. I pray blessing. I pray the favor of God. I pray, Lord Jesus, the journey, God, through this journey, they will be strengthened. Through this journey, there will be provision, God. They would even prosper in wisdom and knowledge and understanding through it, God. I pray this blessing upon each and every one of them. I pray for the Cabarrus education system, that this system, God, would be known not just throughout North Carolina, but throughout the United States, God, as a system that stands on principle and truth, that stands, Lord Jesus, on kids first, God, in providing the environment, Lord, that builds healthy kids for healthy purpose, God. And I thank you for that, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. One more time, can we thank these candidates as they make their way offstage?